All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it's 5:15 PM on Thursday, June 13th, 2019, time for the regular meeting of an anti-city council. We've called a meeting to order. Our first item is always the pledge to our flag. I don't know, on turns these. Councilmember Asparza, your turn?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record this evening, we have six councilmembers with us. And councilmember Harold, you're with us by phone?
Yes, I am.
All right. First item on our agenda is our consent items, which includes this evening's agendas, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda vouchers.
Second. Motion and second, discussion? Are any of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? If she carries. Then we're gonna have to have you use your mute button a little bit, because it gets a little loud when you're on. So, citizens' comments. So this is a time when we ask any member of the audience that wish to address the city council on an item that's either on today's agenda or not. If we're, you hear on the homeless stuff, I think we'll take some public comment, although it's not a public hearing item. We'll take a little bit of comment when we hear from the presentation. But if you hear on any other item, I'd ask you just come up. We give you three minutes. Get your name and address for the record.
Connie Morris, 718 Grand View.
David Morris.
718 what street?
Grand View.
Oh, okay, yes. Okay. All right, go ahead.
All right, I'm just going to read a statement for time, and my husband's gonna be my visual aide.
Oh, excellent.
Person. "I live at 718 Grand View, which is located in the shadows of the proposed development Queens Court Villas. I come here as a concerned citizen, concerned about the impact this project will have on the safety and the well-being of the residents of my neighborhood. I will speak specifically to the impact this project will have on our one-block street. Our area was developed in the late 1950s. Many of us have lived here for decades. There were 10 to 15 homes encompassing a one-block stretch. To the west and north of our home was orchard, and our street was a dead end. Essentially, it was built as a country road with no sidewalks and a narrow roadway. Eventually, the property behind us was developed to a single-family homes. A bisecting street was connected at the end of our block that gave homes on Queens Court access to our street as an exit to Number Two Canyon Road. Being the shortest route to Number Two, many of those residents used our street for driving and walking. An increase in traffic, but not significant to create a problem on our tiny street. Later, Grand View Loop was built to the north of our former dead end, further increasing traffic, both by auto and foot. Since across Number Two Canyon from us is the rack pool and tennis courts, families use our street as access to that facility and the surrounding hills. This increased foot and auto traffic has resulted in a few near accidents between speeding automobiles and pedestrians. All has been manageable to date with warnings to the drivers to slow down. As you look at the map of the Queens Court Villa trip distribution, you see the developer has not even considered our little street as a possible exit, rather pointing to King and Queens Court as, and possibly Linville as likely exit. But realistically, as Ruth and Linda, who came to visit our neighborhood, witnessed firsthand, thank you for coming, appreciate it, most of the traffic from the homes on Queens Court traveled down our street to Number Two Canyon Road. With a development proposal of 35 to 52 units, Queen Court Villas potentially could increase traffic on our street by 300 to 500 trips a day. The construction vehicles would likely use our street as well because of the topography of the other access streets, further deteriorating the conditions present. This is why we are here today, my husband and I'm here to represent my neighborhood. Our children and the well-being and the character of our entire neighborhood are at risk with this project. We have three school buses that stop on our street three times a day at about 7:45 and 3:00. As you can see, our road is quite narrow. Cars cannot pass going the other direction without pulling off the asphalt. On the right side, on the corner, is where the traffic from Queens Court would be turning to exit the neighborhood for work. Also, the mere configuration of our street creates a puddle in front of our home when it rains. This is from May. Can you imagine 300 to 500 trips a day through this puddle? Interestingly, we have a catch base in belt behind our house for the Castle Heights development to alleviate runoff. What will happen to the runoff when they tear up the hillside behind us? Thank you for hearing our concerns. We hope you will keep these in mind if and when you choose to permit this project. For us, it will destroy the character of our neighborhood that has been here for almost 60 years and put our children and grandchildren at great risk. And this, Mayor Kuntz, when the revised plan is submitted, I understand it has not been submitted, is that correct?
I have not, I don't know that we've got revised plans. Glenn, have we seen revised plans?
Not yet.
I would welcome, and we would ask, because there are actually three entities in this whole neighboring that have different perspectives. Our street is specifically the increased traffic down this one block. The Grand View Loop people have their own issues, the Castle Heights. We would love to have a meeting with you at the rack once the revised plan comes in, just to go over some of our concerns, so if that would be possible.
Well, I think, so obviously, the improvement, the entity that approves these things is our hearing examiner, who we've given the authority to do that. What I would say is, I like copies of what you have, so we make sure the hearing examiner has them as part of the record. And then, once the final plans are put in place, I'm sure there'll be some sort of public meetings, generally speaking. I will attend those, but that be part of the plan development process, is that not?
There will be a public hearing before the hearing examiner.
Right.
And then if you have questions, or you'd like, for example, discuss stormwater or traffic questions, we always encourage folks to come and talk with us. If it's a larger group, we can set up, a lot of folks, neighborhood owners, we set up a time and space that we have in our office to ask the questions, but that's.
Dealing with this, we can come talk to you individually.
Yes, absolutely. Folks are always.
And if we have a stormwater issue, our public works director can.
So, I was gonna offer, I've already met with some of your neighbors, talk about, outside of the development process, which we're gonna go through that Glenn mentioned, about potential traffic calming methods. If the project goes forward, what can we do to slow traffic down through the neighborhood to calm that traffic? There's a number of things that we might be able to install, either having the developer install them, or the city could potentially install them at a later date. So, I'm happy, I'll give you my business card, I'm happy to meet with you and as many neighbors you want to bring along to talk about traffic calming, we could also talk about the stormwater issues.
So let me just say about the map. It is so true, you saw where the plan is for people to go this way or that way through another looped road. But the road everyone uses, if you go there and sit there for an hour, everybody uses the little highlighted road. Everybody. It's just kinda like, you know, how the water flow goes, that's where it goes.
And how do we protect ourselves? Or are we just screwed?
Oh, I mean, it's again, the hearing examiner's gotta run that. We'll work on stormwater stuff. And it's one of those developments, it was an old county development that's been annexed into the city that was built to county road standards, not city road standards.
And this map is not proportional?
Yeah. But I know, I know the area, I'm in there often.
Several of us have driven through, we know exactly what you're talking about.
I don't know if you, trying not to project priorities, but yeah, you're involved. So if you made, haven't made this comment, please make sure, because it's definitely open all the way up to, including data. Please, if you haven't made this comment, please, when it comes to stormwater and road requirements, impacts, we'll refer to the public works department, on that, and everything that's been shared with them, we're viewed, so please, please comment if you want to pick out, follow, make sure that the execution is viewed, that's how you can do this, please comment, you all, I appreciate it.
And how will we hear about the hearing?
So what we do with the hearing is, we do notify Connie Morris there, and anyone who has participated in the process, the senator comment, or requests to be notified, will also receive notice, we also get notice in the newspaper for the public hearing, so anyone who has an interest in seeing that for the hearing, send out, or if you need information.
If I might offer up, Mr. DeRees offered the opportunity to meet at any time prior to that, and just as a person who gets involved in these things professionally, if you wait for the hearing notice to come out, you've waited too long. It's just my observation after 42 years.
Right. Mr. DeRees.
To evaluate the project, the comments are really welcome, I appreciate it, because that helps with the basic review. If you're waiting to comment, you get the hearing notice, we've done our staff.
Okay.
You can still, um, no longer, but really helps us a lot with the project, early on. And that's why we do that public comment early. When we receive, we completed, we have a 78th letter, request for clarification, when we receive that, the application will hopefully, we're gonna address it, we'll send a note, letting them know, and starting a comment for the test, because it would be, actually, an aspect of the project. We appreciate your participation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ash. Anybody else wish to address the council on something that's either on today's agenda or, come on up?
Is your address on there?
So I'll be brief, on the same subject, I'm Scott Isaacson, I live at 2001 Linville Drive. I'm president and part of the Castle Rock Heights Homeowners Association, and we are in support of, when I leave my home, I take Grand View to Number Two Canyon Road every day, multiple times a day, and am very concerned about this development with regard to school buses and traffic on that street. But in addition, concerns for our HOA is that current plans for this development is, historically, they were gonna, the plan was always to connect King's Court to Queen's Court to provide a secondary egress for wildfire. That is not, was not in the first proposal for the Queen's Villa. So there will be, in that proposal, there were eight townhouses at the end of King's Court, which would be leaving on Castle Heights Drive. All of the upper part of King's Court would be leaving via Castle Heights Drive. And then there's an additional 22 acres undeveloped that's owned by the same developer, that assume would be single-family homes. All those homes, in addition to the townhouses and King's Court, will have one, one way of access in egress in the case of wildfire. And so our HOA is concerned about traffic and wildfire and people's lives being protected in case of, because they're right up against the hillside there. So in addition to supporting concerns for other people exiting on some of these roads that need improvement, we also have concerns about wildfire for our homeowners association related to this future development, so.
Great.
If I could, so the, appreciate your comments and coming tonight, make sure you get your comments in the record. And so this is a team, a comment gathering session, we're gathering that record, so please submit your.
Yeah, well, I was part of, I was a part of, I think 80 individuals wrote letters, and I was part of that as well.
I just wanna make sure that, clarify that, that this wouldn't be like that comment, that you would be commenting, getting a public hearing, to get your comments.
Very good. Like, for instance, the stuff that Connie brought, if she gave it to us, we would make sure it's part of the record. You just brought your good looks and a nice conversation.
Nice.
Other than being recorded, it's not gonna be part of the public record with respect to that.
And just to clarify, Glenn, so if you've already made comment, but given that they have to go back and redraw things, were you saying that comment, additional comments need, need to be done?
We'll do a new comment period once that new plan comes in, so do recommend that you take a look at that.
So that eliminates the original comments?
Okay, they would still be in the record.
Okay.
So if you believe, if your comments are efficient, they're still in the record.
Okay.
But I do recommend that you take a look at the change, or the code.
Okay.
And that you, you can, you can comment.
Okay.
So make sure that, the valuator and our project, what we recommend, that everything from day one, for the hearing's having a good history.
Very good. Okay. Thanks, Scott. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Who's next? Come on up.
Do you want us to sit down or just stand up? It's very quick.
Oh, sit down, relax. Grab another chair if we need one.
No, that's, we're, I'm Joanne, and this is my husband Larry Tucker, and we live at 719 Grand View, the same block that's going to be impacted by the townhouses, and we're just here in support of the presentation of Dave and Connie Morris. We're all involved in that together.
And I'm Kathy Blom, at 717 Grand View Street, and I'm just in support also of what's already been said today.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to address the council on something that's either on today's agenda or not? Again, we'll take some public comment with respect to the homeless grant stuff. Anything, anybody else? All right, seeing no other takers. So we have a presentation tonight regarding the homeless grant funding recommendations, and sort of, generally speaking, what you would get from our staff would be a recommendation of organizations and programs to fund. The homeless steering committee, which I have sat in the last couple of meetings, there's been some kerfuffle, for lack of a better term, and so I think you're gonna hear from Sandra regarding some of the recommendations from last night, perhaps some staff recommendations that might be different, and then probably some discussion, and then maybe a motion on some stuff, and maybe not. I think if I was to give it a 10,000-foot sort of approach, we got a letter from Commerce, which you guys have, regarding the homeless funds. We are sort of required to do things in accordance with what the state tells us to do, and certain percentages of money needs to go to certain types of programs. We have been in violation of that. City staff's concerned about that and thinks we should get closer to not being in violation. I think the recommendation of the steering committee, led by certain members of the committee, weren't interested in abiding by state law, and thought they should sort of go their own way. And so ultimately, as Steve Smith will tell you, under the contract we have, it is the city council's obligation to make sure that the programs are funded and that we do it in accordance with what we believe is best. Taking the recommendations of the committee seriously, yet this has been one of these ones where it's, there's been a difference of opinion between staff and the committee. And to also add, the committee is not really.
An opinion or interpretation of the rules?
It's, we don't wanna abide by the rules, we're doing fine. And the committee, just so, so you know, most of the committees we're on, there's voting members, you're on Rivercom, there's seven or eight voting members, like, you're on, you're on Rivercom, you're on Link, and all that sort of stuff. Well, this is one that's just if you show up in the room, you get to vote. So there's no, the way that's currently, we're in the process of putting bylaws together, but we're not there yet. So if you show up in the room, you're allowed to vote and voice your opinion, and so we, if you show up and yell out enough, and so anyhow, there's just, it's just been, did I tee that up okay for you, Sandra? I'm assuming you're the one that's gonna come present, so, or Glenn, or somebody, so come on up and, yeah.
This is, this has been quite a process, and the diligence with which we understand what comes from, the direction that comes from the state, the pots of funds, and the, and the goals of the plan and the fulfillment of that, it's a, it's a very delicate balancing act, and so our staff has done a wonderful job.
Hats off to Sandra. Normally, we do this process within one or two meetings, and because of divergence of interests and going a different direction, we are on our eighth meeting, I'm looking at a different course, and I think the mayor summarized the sort of that process well. I just wanted to quickly point out a couple things. There's an article we included on our annual count, and that showed that our number of homeless individuals in Chilena Douglas County was down 15%, which is really encouraging, seeing the needle move in our community. And I think that's a great testament to the progress and the good work, certainly not that I've done, that Sandra and the nonprofits and the commitment the city and the other jurisdictions have had in putting that together. We're starting to make some progress and have a really efficient system, and not, not to say that everything's perfect, but we have some amazing committed folks who care about our community and moving, making progress on reducing homelessness in our region, and they're constantly working on innovative ways to make that system more effective with limited resources. And they're doing that, and we're, you know, this shows that there was a reduction. But one of the things that it does show is that our, we had a 58% increase in people experiencing chronic, long-term homelessness in the valley from 21 to 36, and those are some of the folks, the really, people in a lot, a lot of respects, the highest degree of crisis, and probably the ones that you, people in the community see the most in our public spaces. And then, as the mayor noted, we have the correction letter from the Department of Commerce, which we haven't made sufficient progress in, instead of a 10% progress, which was our goal, we're at a 2% progress on looking at, at sheltering either emergency, transitional, or permanent housing, people who are unsheltered in their car, on the streets, what have you, and they're asking us for, to make a correction in our program to address that. So we feel, well, it's not how we feel, is, you know, we have an obligation under state law, our homeless plan, which implements and has to be consistent with the state homeless plan, to move these forward in a coordinated system. And our, our goals in our plan talk about, just real briefly, party one, expanding services for the chronically homeless individuals and families. Party two, improve the responsiveness of all components of the homeless response system. Three, increasing development and access to affordable rental housing, addressing homelessness, the risk of homelessness for children and youth, improve the coordination of services through the coordinated entry system, strengthen our data collection and analysis system. This recognizes that this isn't just brick and mortar. To make this work and function in our community, we need these service providers working as a hub and a wheel, working and functioning together, and we're making great strides at doing that. Our concerns in looking at the allocations that were made is that a number of the key providers in this hub had funds that were reduced below levels that were in place previously in their key providers in our system. So we have concerns that we're inconsistent with our locally adopted plan, that we're not implementing the RCW, and that we're not meeting our obligations under what we are supposed to operate by, which we're obligated to under contract, under the inter-local agreement with the counties. So staffs, we can go through, I guess what's the pleasure of the council, we can go through and do a quick highlight of the, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. There are 10 categories, we could do just a quick 30,000-foot level of our concern in each, and we do have a suggested motion for you to consider tonight. What's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmembers, you wanna hear individually? You wanna hear where the kerfuffle is? What's your pleasure?
I'd like to hear the whole, I know it's gonna take time, but I'd like to hear the whole thing.
Okay. So just sort of each program, and, yeah.
Great. So what I'll do is I'll sort of.
We've all got these spreadsheets.
Right, and we tried to do some, some notes here. We'll give the abbreviated version, and when it comes to details, Sandra will step in. So the first item, I'm sorry.
If you could, make sure you point out where the kerfuffle is.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. There's a, there's a number of kerfuffles, and so I think both.
As he describes, and if he points out, this is where one of those areas is.
Okay.
Absolutely. We can do that. First of all, on rapid rehousing, we are agreed with the committee on what was allocated for that. There was an increase, but what it reflects is some change in funding between the state on how things were allocated, and requirements on how that's allocated. So long-term prevention dollars were added to rapid rehousing. Rapid rehousing are vouchers that are given out for people who are, through our coordinated entry system, to get housing, and through the great work of Sandra and planning staff, we were actually able to raise the dollar values that people can get so they could be more aggressive in getting our expensive rents and be more successful in that. So we really didn't have a disagreement on that, so unless there are questions on that first funding category, I would move to the next one, unless there are questions.
Just tell me what score means, like.
Yes, certainly. So the score is a, there were some, over the years, developed some sample scoring on how applications were viewed, so we do a request for proposals with our application packets, and then we have some sample, we have some questions, and they're rated for scoring.
Higher the score, the better?
Yes, so the higher score, the better, as far as how the committee rated them in the evaluation process. So that's what that score is from that subgroup of the steering committee.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and the maximum that applicant could get was 116.
They asked you what the scale was.
Great. So, in rapid rehousing, the importance of that is actually being able to get people, so we have, we'll have more vouchers next year, less prevention dollars, but it's really important that we be able to aggressively find people homes, and we'll get to that in the next category, a couple categories here. This next category is long-term and short-term prevention. Our concern on these, let's see, if you go to the, we're in concurrence on the community action, if you go down to volunteer attorney services, the, there was an award added to this component for additional funds for a new program for volunteer attorney services. Staff isn't, staff's concerned on the additional dollars granted, not that it's not a good program, we don't mean to infer that, but our concern is that other programs that are vital to this cog, to this deal, were decreased in funds to provide this. this new program, and our recommendation on this was that it remained at the current level, and that it not be increased because other important programs lost dollars, and we didn't want to see the funding level decrease. On Shland Valley Hope and Upper Valley Mend, these were actually given, let's see here, additional dollars. Shland Valley Hope has proposed a brand-new program. Shland Valley Hope has done some good work, but they are having some restructuring going on, and in the midst of that restructuring, they're proposing a new program, and staff believes that, you know, not awarding a new program in the midst of that restructuring would be probably the best approach, especially given that this additional money was awarded at the sacrifice of other key programs that are in place. So, our recommendation was that this not be awarded, but it was awarded. Upper Valley Mend actually got an increase of funds. So, there were some increases in here, and the part of the concept from the two county commissioners was they wanted to increase short-term, what's the word, prevention funds. That's not really what these were, and we were concerned about these additional funds being added to these categories while other key programs were reduced, which help us meet state requirements. Are there any questions? I know this is a quick overview, are there any questions on that category? Okay, and stop me as I go through if I may speak or miss anything, Sandra. Transitional funding, I believe our main concern here was on, again, on being able to house people, and we have a deficiency, right, on being able to house the unsheltered. Well, we have one of our primary entities out there that can house people, the Bruce Housing is, there was a decrease in funding, albeit small, but it was about 7,000 or 8,000. We certainly don't recommend that one of our key assets out there be reduced in funding, at least maintain what they have. They actually requested a increase because of the, you know, it's really tough to, they fund the majority of their structure in maintaining it, but it is incredibly, every year's more and more difficult, so we didn't recommend that that be decreased, certainly, and so we had a concern there on being able to maintain, again, compliance with what we need, and reducing that fund, we didn't believe was, we thought was inappropriate, given that. That was our only concern, I think, in that category. Unless there are any questions, I'd go to the next category under permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing, I think, was only minor. Again, we fund, for some reason, we wanted, we suggest that we match current funding levels, there's only, for Women's Resource Center, this is for permanent supportive housing. We wouldn't recommend that they be decreased in funds from what they are currently. That was only $1,300, $1,000, but still, we didn't, we wouldn't recommend that be decreased. Again, it helps us house that number that we're deficient on already, so we certainly wouldn't recommend any of those be reduced in being able to maintain their functions on supporting housing. Unless there are any, that's a pretty simple one. Unless there are any questions, I'd move to landlord liaison, which is a little more complicated. So, landlord liaison is a fairly new program for us, run by Women's Resource Center, and they've made great strides. This is a wonderful program. If you look at the costs of doing new brick-and-mortar units, we're blessed that Catholic, what's the name exactly, Catholic Charities is going to have, as part of this program, eligible about 33 units that will be eligible for this program, 67 overall, but 33 for this program. The per-unit cost is, what, about $254,000 per unit? $224,000, okay. So, cheaper, but $224,000 per unit. Well, for a relatively small amount, full funding, $180,000, we can get, they've established this partnership with landlords and are increasing the number of landlords and the landlord management groups where we can get access to more units at a very inexpensive cost. And there's a mitigation management fund, which we haven't, I don't believe we've had to use yet, but there's a guarantee, there's a relationship, there's management of the people and the units, and the landlords like it because they know they're covered, and they know that there's someone in there watching out for their interests. And it's a great program, it's building steam, and if you look at rapid rehousing dollars on increasing the number of vouchers out there to house people, well, what do we need to push those? Because what's the likelihood of getting another 67-unit structure funded? Well, we'd love it to be very likely, but it doesn't come by every day. Well, we can push, through landlord liaison, getting more units freed up, and as a city, we're adding, what, in the next two years, about 1,400 units? Those are market rate units. It should filter down to where we can get more affordable units online. Well, who can help us get access to those units? The landlord liaison program. It is essential key component, and again, that cog, that wheel, that system, being able to have all those parts together to make it function and work is essential, and that helps us get those rapid rehousing vouchers out to people so they can be housed. And so, this was reduced by $40,000 in a program that's gaining steam, and to be consistent with our plan, to address the state's correction letter, we think it is essential that that $40,000 be given back. And what was funded here was a educational program through the Y, which we believe should be, it's been problematic, it hasn't worked well, and we believe that to be effective and more streamlined, it's something that the Women's Resource Center can do themselves in working with clients at the same time. So, what we're recommending was that we remove the $40,000 for something that hasn't worked well for education and give that back to Women's Resource Center. So, this is a key fundamental thing that we believe is a concern and should be addressed.
When you say education, what kind of education?
Yeah, it's a tenant education, having, helping them become a good tenant, to think about paying rents and impacts to their units and budgeting and things of that, you know, what their rights are, and things of that nature. But it hasn't functioned well, and it could be, we believe, easily incorporated with the landlord tenant, the staff at Women's Resource Center, more effectively. Getting people synced in a timely manner with that training has not worked well, and that's no way a negative to the Y and the good people that they have there and the good work they do. I don't mean that in any way. It just hasn't functioned well, and I think pretty much everybody has admitted that. And it's more important, we believe, to maintain that key function of those folks getting units out there in a very inexpensive manner compared to building new units.
Sandra, Glenn, so, what exactly do you do, how does that program work with the Women's Resource Center to encourage the landlord to participate? Laurel, you want to come up and deal with that? Since you're sitting out there, or do you want Glenn and Allison to do that?
I'm Laurel Turner, executive director of Women's Resource Center. So, and Billy Bilderback is the landlord tenant liaison, so he's the one that probably should be telling you. But, so, his side is sort of matchmaking, going out and finding likely landlords, some who have open units that, we can talk to them and say, here, we're gonna educate this new tenant of yours, we're going to, we have a risk mitigation fund so that we can cover damage that may happen, but we're gonna be in there doing case management on a regular basis, quite a bit at first, and then slowly, you know, kind of weaning them off of case management, but, so that they just know what it takes to be a good tenant, and that means, a lot of people who are formerly homeless, for instance, don't want to report something's leaking because they've probably been evicted before for complaining about something. We want them to know that's their right to do, and we will work between them and the landlord.
So, you're educating the landlord also, say, this isn't such a bad deal, we're gonna come in and help these people.
And they're guaranteed that if damages happen, that, you know, someone else is gonna fix it, not them.
Yeah.
And we have not touched the previous biennial mitigation fund at all, we've been able to just keep damages from happening.
And what I think is pretty cool is we have the Rental Association, two of those members are on our task force, and they show up regularly to every meeting, and they sing this program's praises and the staff's praises on how effective it is, and how, you know, there's been some surprises on them, and, but just how effective and good those folks are at their job and how well set up the program is. They talk about it frequently. They're the biggest advocates, I'd say.
They ask us sometimes to come and speak at the association meetings about specific issues and how to handle them with high-barrier folks because they haven't had, you know, when you can cherry pick and put anybody in you want, you don't deal with them regularly. So, now, if they hit, they want to make sure they're doing their job well, people being a good landlord.
I'm gonna put you on the spot, can you tell me one landlord that had seven units and said, you know what, this is working, not the name of anybody, but is there something that clicks like, boy, this was a miracle?
We have, we have currently 15 landlords, and many of them have multiple units, and we've had them call and say, this is working so well, I have one opening up next month, bring me somebody else.
These are all doors, you know, for the most part, that were previously closed, and if you think of those, all those units at $224,000 a unit, and the cost that we're getting in the short time that this has been in place, pretty encouraging.
All right, thanks, Laurel.
The homeless outreach is the next category, and let me see here, this was a decrease, this is our primary face, this is part of that cog, this wheel again. Who is going out there and reaching out to these folks in, who are chronically homeless? There's a lot of trust, a lot of crisis, and it's important that we have a face out there. A lot of people won't communicate with people, they, they're not, we need to get them entered into the program and being open to services so we can try to meet their needs, and it's not always housing, sometimes it's diversion, sometimes it's a bus ticket, sometimes it's helping them get some training or getting treatment, and these outreach folks are key, a key cog in this wheel, and they reach out to these people, and sometime, we've heard some amazing stories. Sometimes it takes six to eight times of these people reaching out and communicating with these individuals to where they actually build a relationship. Well, who else is going to do that? You know, if we just expect them to pick up a phone to get entered into a system, that's not realistic, right? For most, for a lot of them in crisis, they're just not going to do that. We can have handouts with the numbers on them, that's not gonna reach these people. Well, how are we going to do it? This outreach is a key component of that system, and the proposal here would decrease the funding by $32,000 and reduce this individual to part-time. Well, this is a key component of that cog, and so, we were concerned over that reduction and believe that should be a full-time position. Are there any questions on that?
Sure. Do you have, like, a safety check, like, somebody, like, you can call this, call and say, hey, my daughter's on the street, can I have a safety check to see if she's alive, or, how does that work? I know, like, you can call the police, I don't know about this city, but in any city, ever, you can call the police and say, I would like a safety check, and then they go out and find you.
No, I'd have to defer to the program, and I'm sure, we do get calls, and we field calls at the city where we'll say, hey, we see an individual out there, can you talk with him? We've had people at PIBUS, and say, hey, they're, you know, working, can you go talk with the people that are at PIBUS and help them know where, you know, places that might be safe to hang out, or different ways to relate, or what services are available. So, I can't speak for them, but I would imagine if someone called, they've been very responsive to us, and we give their number out to folks so that they can be aware of people in the community, and they actively go out and talk with them.
I see Laurel nodding that they do do that.
Yeah, and at the task-
It's not quick, I'm sorry.
At the task force meeting, so, the question was asked of our police chief, because we do have a contract through our police department with Catholic Family, and so, the two go hand-in-hand. So, you've kind of got that covered because there, it's a matter of building trust. So, if the Catholic Family outreach doesn't have that, then the Women's Resource Center outreach person does, and so, the two working together has been really, really good.
And Catholic Family will focus on, has specific areas of expertise on opioid addictions, a mental health, and then there's also Veterans, who focuses on veterans. All, there's been, these task forces are great, we've had to, we keep having to move our locations because there's been more collaboration among these nonprofits and sharing of information and partnerships.
And the other thing I'd add about the outreach program is, the Women's Resource Center specialist has also made efforts to reach out to outlying areas, so they've begun making connections and visits to Shalan and Leavenworth and Cashmere, so they've expanded their range too, which has been wonderful.
Are there any more questions on that one? Let's see here. You know, I think on the next one, on emergency shelters, it was just a minor fund change, and there was a request to increase that by $2,000, and it rated a perfect $116,000 for Sage Domestic Violence Shelter, which provides a very important and unique service for the region, and so, as such, we believe with that perfect score that they should receive that additional funding. That was our only concern, really, on the emergency shelter, since it did receive the perfect score. On hotel vouchers, so, hotel vouchers, right now, we were looking at requirements for low-barrier shelters, and I think we've had some discussions on low-barrier shelters, and those really are heavily oriented to those people, well, the chronically homeless that we talked about in that article, the people with some of the greatest needs in our community in crisis, and we were able to meet our low-barrier shelter requirements, in part now, through our hotel voucher program. Well, currently, we have a fund for that with the Community Action Council, for example, at $18,964, and that helps us, in part, meet that requirement for low-barrier shelters. Well, for some reason, during that process, they decreased that funding in half, and then they increased Shland Valley Hope and Mend, and decreased the local one. We're concerned over that. We believe, our recommendation is that we maintain the current funding levels for each at where they're at, and not decrease the local one. This helps us meet our requirements, again, in the plan, under the state, and looking specifically at low-barrier requirements, although we really need to grow that into other areas, which is a whole nother topic that we won't touch on tonight. But that was the main concern on that item, unless there are any questions on that. And then the, the next item is for, let's see here, this is for coordinated entry. There previously, it's a little hard to read here, but previously, the amount that had been in there was 40,000 more?
Well, it was 380, then 330.
Yeah, and 330, and what the committee recommended was 280. The concern here is, right now, is Catholic Family has two folks who do this. Our coordinated entry system is our main portal, that that's how services are allocated, and that's how everything's coordinated. We have two people do that, we do have, Community Action can do some of that, and then Mend and Shland Valley Hope in a very small way for those communities, a small percentage, rather. But most of it all goes through Catholic Family Services, and what they're looking at is that, you know, these, a lot of these services that we're looking at aren't fully funded, certainly most of them aren't, and they're looking at having to cut people's hours back if they don't get a little more money for, like, cost-of-living adjustments. money for like cost of living adjustments. We're recommending that, and again, originally it was around 330 and they were able to do that and, and take care of staff. Through some of the adjustments that we've talked about above, if we were to add just even $16,000 here, we would be able, they would be able to maintain their two full staff members and not reduce them. This, part of the program goals were on data tracking. Well, that's where we get all our data. It's all, it's our, it's our, our entry, it's our monitoring, it is just key to the system. If it's not functioning, if we decrease staff, it's, it's a big impact. So we're recommending $16,000 to, so that they keep their staff intact. There, are there any questions on that? Then our, our last item here is capital. And there was a, a new component added here of $250,000 for a capital construction. And that could be low barrier, it could be affordable housing to house homeless. We're not recommending it necessarily, a change here. There is additional revenue though out there under some new legislation that could replace this funding or add to it. And I guess we're hoping that the two counties would be willing to use that funding to address this and maybe free up program funds to do some other things. But that's not necessarily, here, now as far as, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to outline our recommendation on that?
I think I would, I would ask, let's, I guess I have a question. So, and I don't need a, no one needs to do division or high math, but between the columns says allocated per RFP, which is what the committee approved yesterday, and staff recommended allocations, which are in the far column of ours, and this commerce letter, which one gets us closest to what the state wants us to do?
Staff's recommendation.
Does it get us all the way or most of the way?
I think it helps maintain our, our system. And it, with taking a step back, it's a lot harder to have a good, honest answer for the state and, and say that we're making progress instead of taking a step back.
The, the, in the capital, the $250,000, is that specified to what that's going toward? Is that?
We have some very rough, Sandra, is that something, I, I can't recall exactly which do you mind pressing?
Oh, yes, right now there's an RFP that's out for that. That's due on June 26th and there's three eligible areas. One is the construction of affordable, low-income housing. The other would be the construction of a low-barrier emergency shelter. And then there was a small amount of funding, about 10,000 for ADA upgrades to make existing shelters and facilities accessible.
This was something that the county commissioners were really wanting to make sure.
I want to go back to the, the low-income affordable housing. What, whose definitions and guidelines and, I mean, these are tax dollars.
Yeah, again, this is something the county commissioners were, both the Douglas and Shalane County Commissioners were wanting to make sure that we were outbuilding stuff. And they felt this was the best way. I know we are, I agree. That's, again, we couldn't get that.
I don't know what low-income affordable housing is.
We're building, we're building. We're building 100 units right now between what Laurel's building and what Catholic Family's building. We're building 100 plus units right now as we speak. Yeah.
I think the idea in setting aside the capital is they wanted a fund that if we didn't have any applications for it, could roll forward and could provide the match like they were able to do with Catholic Family. Our city has been doing that outside of this process, you know, putting a, from your general fund in order to incent the low, low-income funding. And I think it was a concern of a number of us on the evaluation committee that you have agencies who are nonprofits who are providing these essential services. We had applications for $750,000 more than the funds available.
I guess that's what I'm, what I'm after is it's, it's almost like it's on the come and I don't know what, and I'm uncomfortable with tax dollars. Not being tied to, to something that the public has confidence in how they're being spent and why they're being set aside and why they're being allocated.
So I think the consensus at least yesterday was that there's RFPs out for that money and that when they come in at the end of the month, that the committee would look at those RFPs, rate them, and then look at the programs and say, really? Are we still better off putting money into whatever versus these programs? I think these should be in the programs, right? And I've said that clearly, but we have two county commissioners that don't believe they should go into programs, that there's magically, we're going to build our way out of this and that the way you do this, you just keep building and you save and save and save and in 20 years you build another 30 units. Those of us that disagree with that concept, and ultimately it's you guys' decision to sort of work with that.
So in, in the evaluation of those, I'm assuming like most, most RFPs processes, there will be a, as empirical or as objective as possible set of criterion that?
There's, there's some criteria. I think what we really fall back on is the definitions for, you know, is this serving the homeless? But there's not a lot of guidelines on it. It's something brand new that the county commissioners developed.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we, we said to them yesterday, it was perfectly honest, we said that 250 needs to go into programs. There's a new state law, blah, blah, blah.
House Bill 1406?
House Bill 1406. It basically allows your county commissioners to sort of adopt like the PFD did. Remember we adopted a 0.033 tax, but we didn't really adopt a tax. It was money that came from the state, sort of like the, there's one of those now for homelessness, that if they adopt it, right? No money out of our pocket. There's money that comes from the state, 250 grand a year, 300 grand a year.
There's different levels that they can adopt it at.
So we told them, adopt the new tax. If you want to use that for capital, I don't care, get this into programs. And of course, the county commissioner said, well, it's too early to tell and a tax is a tax and we're not, you know, they're standard. So they're not even willing to take the free money for capital, but God forbid you, you get this money into programs, which is where it needs to be. So that was one of the kerfuffles that we've sort of, we've.
But it's just something that I, that I noticed and, and I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with it this.
Yeah, just as much as I.
You know, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable with it.
Most of these programs are insufficiently funded and struggle.
For example, the Women's Resource Center for the Bruce, their cost to operate is 750,000. So they were, you know, looking at a reasonable portion for these funds to help support. With their original ask, it was 319,000, I believe.
So I think, I think there's, I mean, we have a couple of options here. We could adopt the, the ones that the committee said were okay. We could entertain, you know, a motion to have Sandra go out and do contracts with them. We could say, no, let's just do the, the city one, the staff recommendations, which is, and that would be fine as well. You could do a hybrid and say, you know, where they agree, take the lowest and we'll kick the can down the road. I'm sort of inclined to do the city recommendations and sort of be done with it, but that's my sort of understanding of work that Sandra and staff's done. But I think before we do it, how many members of the audience want to address the council? I know Laurel does. Anybody else on the homeless issue? So Laurel, let's hear from you quickly and then let's sort of turn it over to the council. You may get some questions and then we'll see if we can make some sort of consensus here.
Thank you. Glenn and Sandra actually told you a lot of what I was going to tell you in the beginning, so I'll just cut to the end. But I also wanted to let you know that within the landlord tenant liaison program, that part of the scope of work that when we answered the original RFP was that we promised our landlords that we would follow these tenants for up to two years. And at the funding level where we are right now, I, I wouldn't be able to really expand my program to add more people because I can hardly follow the people that we already have housed. So I'm not about to go back on my word to any of my landlords. So that's very important to me, to stress. And I, I do think, I understand that it's between 250 and 310,000 dollars set aside for capital projects. While I'm the first to applaud folks for efforts to add much-needed units to our affordable housing stock, I don't think that the funds are adequate to make any great impact on our housing inventory efforts. It costs upwards of $200,000 per unit to build new multifamily housing. Housing a homeless household using the rapid rehousing slash landlord tenant liaison partnership costs around $11,000 per year in the Shalane County area, per placement, not per year. I'd like to see whatever funds currently set aside in the, to be redistributed among the direct homeless service providers who have applied for the city grants. I'm sure the WRC was not the only agency whose allocations reduced this year. And I hope you'll consider these data while reviewing the steering committee recommendations.
Any questions for Laurel? All right. Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you.
So the, the, the recommendations in, in the column with today's date on it.
That would be staff recommendations, correct?
Yes, for the June 13th column.
Yeah, I wrote staff on top of mine.
Or I'll put it out there for discussion purpose. I make a motion that we approve the recommended allocations dated June 13, 2019 and authorize staff and the mayor to prepare the appropriate documents accordingly.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to authorize the expenditures in accordance with the staff recommended allocations and authorize the mayor to negotiate contracts in accordance with that allocation. I would tell you that, that again, depending on what the RFPs look like, there'll hopefully be some adjustments later on to bring that 250 back up an additional contract, but that's something we can't quite control right yet.
Well, under the comment portion of this, yes, I would repeat that. I'm really uncomfortable on a quarter million dollars until I, I see what's, what's proposed in there. I just, I'm just really uncomfortable of smoke in the air and trying to grab it.
Are you making an amendment?
No, no, that's, that's the political, that's just discussion. Yeah.
Okay. Well, this. So are we in discussion now?
Yeah, we're in discussion.
I, I am. I don't understand. So what's, if, if we accept this, what's the 250,000? Are we going to have a choice where this goes?
You will ultimately have the final decision. The 250, there's still some RFPs that are out there. It'll go back through the committee to make their sort of look at the RFPs, look at other programs. They'll make a recommendation probably in the next month?
July 31st.
Sure, July 31st, they'll make a recommendation. It'll come back in the same formula. Our staff will probably give you their recommendations right next to it, right? And you'll get to make the same decision again on the 250 would be my guess. Is that the way you envision that, Sandra and Glenn?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, and that's what I understood in making the motion.
Yeah, okay.
We get another bite.
Another bite at the 250, yeah. So any discussion? I know there's been a lot going on here, so.
I've, I've got, I guess clarification, I, you know, I, the motion I agree with, I think the dollar is going into, into programs. And what I'm trying to reconcile here in my, in my mind is the, you know, the Department of Commerce letter, I guess where I'm, where I'm working from. So sorry if I seem really dense here, but I'm trying to put some numbers together here. You know, am I correct in reading that the target goal of, of serving 60% of those that are either, that are basically unsheltered? Is that, is that correct? Okay, so, so is that, does that mean that there's 40% of, and I'm assuming we're talking about the 400 and, 412 homeless that have been identified as, as of this? Okay, so. So that means that the 40, 40% of the, of this 412 aren't being served at all in, is that correct?
The, the way the percentage is calculated is, is out of all the people that are being served and there can be unsheltered homeless and sheltered homeless, like families living in emergency shelters. And there also can be families that are at risk of homelessness. So there's a lot of different types of services provided in the system, but out of that whole range of services, 60% ideally would go to unsheltered, which would be people living outside or in uninhabitable places fleeing domestic violence.
Okay, so that's, so there isn't this rather large group of folks that are getting those services?
Yeah, it's a range.
Okay, that, that was where I, where I was confused. And then I guess, you know, that, so the target then, according to the state, is 60%. I use that. We're, we're less than that and statewide is less than that. And it's, it seems though that their, their recommendation mandate, however we want to put that, is that we achieve that. And I guess that, that what I'm seeing here, now that they, they seem to imply that there hasn't been any, at least a 10% improvement, at least according to this article, we made reduction to 15%. Is that correct?
Overall, but in terms of our chronically homeless people, it went up by, I think it was 15% from 21 to 36, I believe it was. So that subset within our population went up, but our overall homelessness went down. So that was good news, but the, the folks that are the most vulnerable living outside went up. And the commerce letter is really targeted towards that group.
Okay.
Which is, which is Laurel's programs and some of the other ones that we need to make sure that we're.
The letter doesn't really clearly define.
Yeah.
So my question is, we've, we've got these staff proposal of numbers. I'm sure that will go back. What, what else goes back with this letter that says, here's the steps we are taking to go from 39 to 60% in, in a nutshell?
So yes, we go through the different program components on what the choices were made in our program to help maintain progress, help maintain key components in place to address the situation and what steps were made to improve. So, you know, for example, the, the rapid rehousing increase, the statewide change from doing less prevention and more rapid rehousing dollars is a good improvement that we can show that's, was agreed upon. But then not being able to have a tool to go get people those houses, not having a tool to be able to reach them and get them to be involved in the system is a key failure. And if we take a step back on those, it's tough to send a letter to the state and say, we're making progress and we have, we have a commitment to addressing this when we cut those programs.
I, I agree, we don't want to take a step back. But I guess, I guess what I'm looking for is we feel these changes are going to change that percentage how much? And what's our projected increase to get to that 60% that we feel our staff recommendations are going to make?
Yeah, it's, it's tough right here to give you a, a, a projection.
But they're going to be looking for something like that, aren't they?
Yeah. They'll be looking for improvements, yeah.
Yeah, and right now our, the, the overall target is 60%, but our current contract requires that we improve by 5% each year. So, and we've only improved by 2%. We ran some numbers and their formula shifts depending on how large of the population we're serving, which goes up and down every year. But based on the current numbers, if we wanted to hit 60%, I believe it was 98 households, we'd have additional households who are chronically homeless we'd have to serve. And so like.
So if we only need to go up 5% per year, that reduces that down quite a bit and that 250,000 can take a big bite out of that.
And we can talk about things, for example, like the landlord liaison program has been building capacity and we expect that, you know, to continue.
Especially with the number of new units we have on and people moving and some of the, yeah.
We've got new units, we've got increased our rapid rehousing dollars. So we can, we can point to specific components and, and say that we, you know, we have ongoing commitment and with these decisions and funding, we believe that we can make progress to, to meet that goal.
If you had the 250 today, you have your, like your top three of where, where you would focus? What is that?
We couldn't hear your heads.
I mean, we could work on that. I, I know one is coordinated entry and a great group of people who pretty much self-manage themselves in this, they meet frequently and, and try to problem solve and be more efficient. And part of their frustration is the ability to do more case management with folks and call them back and touch, you know, they get the initial calls and they do some callbacks, but there's not the money and time for case management. And they believe with that money and maybe some additional funds to do self-resolve or what's the other term, where they like a bus ticket, that type of thing.
Diversion.
And diversion, if there were additional funds that they could very effectively and in, you know, in an inexpensive manner, probably get, move that needle further. So that would be something that has been unanimously voiced by the, by the, by those parties, that if they had additional funds, they believe they could do so much more. So that's, I think, tough. And then if you look at some of these parties, for example, on the Bruce, that have requested additional funding to be able to house. additional funding to be able to house those unsheltered, what have you, I believe those are, would be top priorities. We could go through a more detailed analysis, but just tough. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, no, I concur with that. And then definitely there, I think our agencies, really all of them, you know, do a wonderful job, but they're on limited budgets. And I think for some of them, keeping the funding level at existing levels isn't, isn't adequate.
It's not realistic with, with, you know, having to pay folks increased medical costs, increased, you know, cost of living adjustments. Yeah, it's not, we received more funding, it would be wonderful to, you know, give them a realistic bump every year as well.
Okay, change, change subject. How's this money distributed? Monthly, quarterly?
Mayor Coons?
Yeah, Linda?
Right.
Yes.
I'm really struggling here to understand the speaker, just simply because sometimes there is, people turn their pages and it's all echoing in the microphone. But are we, will this motion still include the 250,000 for construction?
It is still up to the committee to decide how to spend that and bring that back to this council for final approval. And if staff recommends something different, they're to bring us that as well for us to consider. So the 250 is still in play, but not quite, not ready to be allocated yet.
Okay. I just have a couple of comments. There were a couple of things that I felt that we should not have increased, a couple, one other major thing that I felt that we should have probably drastically reduced, mainly because accurate information wasn't given and they didn't have answers to our questions. I do see the value of the 250,000 for construction, but I don't see the value of cutting the programs. And I am very concerned. My major concern is the fact that we are not getting up the numbers that the Department of Commerce requires us to get to. That's the difference.
Okay. All right. Mike, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm curious how the money gets distributed.
Okay.
Quarterly, monthly, how's that work?
To the agency?
Yes.
Yeah, they, most programs invoice monthly. And so they, you know, once a month bill and we reimburse, so it's on a reimbursement basis.
So most programs, so I'm going to be specific on the why WCA indicated they may consider closing women's shelter. So do they do monthly?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second to basically fund the programs and ask Sandra to bring contracts to the mayor's signature regarding all of these programs based on the staff recommended allocation in our packet today. We've had full discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. It's 6:30, let's take a little five-minute break. I don't know if the bathrooms open, do we know? Did we get access to them?
All right, I think we're ready.
Okay.
All right. We've got some action items this evening, so first up is regarding Coleman Oil Cleanup, which we've heard about a couple of times, so Jessica Shaw will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Jessica Shaw with the Public Works Department. And tonight I have with me Pat Wicks, who's going to talk for just a brief minute, give you guys a quick update on Coleman Oil, and he's also here in case you have any questions about that cleanup process. And for the action item tonight, we had just completed a renewal of their temporary discharge agreement back in March. They had some high-water issues that resulted in more water showing up that they were having to treat as part of their cleanup efforts, and so tonight we have to present for you an amendment to that temporary discharge agreement, just to allow them to discharge a little bit more water. Actually, it's just doubling, but our staff at the treatment plan have said it's no problem. We can handle that, so staff's recommendation is that this is okay with us.
Great. Come on up, Pat.
I'll turn it over to Pat.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, my name is Pat Wicks. My company is Environmental Engineering and Consulting. We're from the Tri— I'm from the Tri-Cities. I have a group of people who are helping move with this cleanup. We got involved last spring, so we've been working on it for over a year now. Previous consultants and our efforts as of last spring are represented by this slide here, this diagram. This is the tank farm that the company had. This was a large warehouse, second warehouse here. These spots on the map are wells that were drilled, either by our predecessor or by us. Coleman had done some previous investigations because they had some miners' spills, and they did some investigation before they bought this property. So you can see all these wells, so on and so forth, on the diagram. And we started pumping three wells last spring. This one, this one, and this one here, or no, this one here, okay? Three wells we were pumping. We were getting some product. The first day we pumped this well here and all the other two, we generated a heck of a lot of product in just that first day.
Can you define product for me in a way that's more definitional for me? Some sort of oily mix?
Diesel, biodiesel, the material that was spilled—
Okay, thank you.
—from the leak in the underground pipeline. Yeah, right. And there, you know, there were other products that were stored and might have been contaminated in the soil here too, from previous operations, so anyway, so that's what we were doing as of last spring. Now, things have changed a bit. We have, as part of the investigation, we needed—we wanted to clean the soil and better than we had been before with those few wells we were pumping, and we wanted to reduce the amount of material that winds up in the river. So that's the objective, clean this soil, keep it out of the river. So we installed a number of additional wells, about another 15, and installed and upgraded the treatment system for those wells. So we are now retrieving water and product from these two wells and this well together, and those flow into our system for the treatment. I'll explain the treatment better in just a moment. Then we've got a couple other wells here, and we've got another three wells here. So we have a total of nine wells that we are pumping now. And the other wells that we drilled had essentially nothing. So the stuff, you know, travels where it wants to go based on the geology and the groundwater, so we have been pumping these nine wells for probably six months now or more. These—the pumps are positive displacement pumps that are operated by air pressure. So we have a compressor, added a compressor, and the compressor—the air from the compressor provides the power to pump those wells, and we're pumping groundwater and any product that's there as well, okay? They come down to a series of three oil-water separators. Three wells go into one, another three go into another, and then the last three go into a third one. Then they go into a small tank from the oil-water separator. Essentially, all the oil has been removed, down to less than 1 percent, and then goes into a storage tank. From that storage tank, we pump the partly-treated water through a filter and through two granular activated carbon units. That takes out essentially all the hydrocarbons and any of the other contamination that we're worried about. So then we have three other tanks that we store that treated water in. When we have a full tank of treated water, we take a sample, we send it to a laboratory, then the laboratory sends the results back to us. We send those results to the city, and the city says, "Go yes, yes, or no." We've always been yes, but hopefully we never get to a no. So anyway, so we're doing a pretty good job on cleaning up the water. Then we will switch to another tank once one tank is full and sampled, and then that clean water that the city has approved will be pumped out through the same trench in a different pipeline, out to the sewer—city sewer access point out here next to the street. So that's what we're doing, and we appreciate the chance to tell you about it. Any questions I could answer?
So why are we—why double? Just groundwater has changed this year, something's going on?
Well, it's seasonal.
Okay.
We had a few days this spring where we were recovering 8,000 and 9,000 gallons a day.
Wow, okay.
Right now, we're not recovering nearly that much. So—but every once in a while, we're going to see that level, and we need to be able to treat it and get rid of it, so we don't overflow our tanks and that kind of thing.
And how long is this process going to take?
We don't know. It could take another six months, it could take another two or three years.
Okay.
Until it's empty.
It'll be done when it's done.
Yeah. And what are you generally seeing in the trends when you're doing the evaluation of the product versus water? Is it becoming less—
Yes, we're making progress. We're making progress. And one of the things we're making progress with particularly is what's getting into the river. We're seeing very little sheens. We do still see some sheens out there, but you remember the pictures of when the spill was discovered.
I was there in the morning.
I mean, there was—there were several inches of R-99, that red stuff, on the river. We weren't there then, but we've seen the pictures too.
Yeah.
And so now, all we see is an occasional sheen, maybe once or twice a week, and it's very—you know, it's not thick product.
Right.
In fact, it's so thin that we have difficulty even getting a sample of it, because there's so little there anymore. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. We want all those sheens to go away, and—but we're not quite there yet. Any other questions?
No. So Jessica, staff thinks we should improve the contract. It's all good with us?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any questions for staff? If not, I turn it over to the council for any action.
I'll make a motion for City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment—addendum to agreement for temporary discharge of treated groundwater to the City of Wenatchee Publicly Owned Treatment Works.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor to sign the amended addendum to the agreement for temporary discharge of treated groundwater to the City of Wenatchee Publicly Owned Treatment Works. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jessica. Thanks, Pat, for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Jessica's up again. Ordinance 2019-10 regarding grading. What's going on, Jessica?
Yep, so this is some cleanup work from the land-surface modification code that was adopted back in May. So this is deleting Appendix J out of our building code section, which was our former land-surface modification code, but now we've adopted a full code under the Public Works. So this is just cleaning up the code so we don't have conflicting regulations or two areas that cover the same type of activities, so.
We would never have conflicting code. Any questions for Jessica? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for ordinance number 2019-10, amending section 2.04.010, adoption of reference codes of the City of Wenatchee Code by the deletion of 2.04.010, subsection B, Appendix J, grading.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Markhart, to adopt ordinance 2019-10, amending section 2.04.010, adoption of reference codes of the Wenatchee City Code by the deletion of 2.04.010, subsection B, Appendix J, term grading. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. All right. Jake, who's coming up? Pavement preservation.
Good evening. My name is Jake Loing. I'm a project engineer with the City of Wenatchee Public Works, here to present the 2020 pavement preservation project. We came back in March to get budget approval for this job. This is intended to overlay about 15 miles of roadway next year, and so with this effort, when we do overlays of the roadway, we also need to bring any ADA facilities crossing the roadway up to the current standards, and this will take a considerable effort to get out there. A lot of pavement coring to figure out how thick the streets are, which ramps need to be replaced, through the design to accomplish that and figure out how much—how many streets we can accomplish with this budget. So we put out a request for qualifications this spring, and we received seven proposals, and a panel selected Partite Engineering as the most qualified, and so we're here to ask council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Partite for design services for this project and to get them started here this summer for construction next year.
Have we specifically identified which 15 miles, or is that still something that we'll be reviewing?
So this came out of our pavement management program. It basically gave us a 10-year list of projects, and so we put together what we—tentative list, but that's based on some high-level planning numbers and overall pavement conditions. So this will help us to pare down that list and stick to the program, this programmatic approach to bring in our PCI, our condition of all of our streets up over the next 10 years. So we have a tentative list that we are giving them to start with, and the intent with this is to further design, sharpen our pencil on these estimates, and make sure what we put out, we get the best bang for our buck.
I think as you get that sort of narrow, and I think the council—you know, we have some council districts now, I think that they'd like to sort of know which ones are in their district and not in their district, and sort of—I think the more we communicate as you sort of pare that down, they're going to want to be involved in that a little bit.
Yeah, I should say, back in March, we—I did put a list—or a map with the project, and I could provide a list. This one is really focusing—whereas the chip sill that we were planning this summer is most of the arterials throughout town. This is a collection of mostly residential's, and it's really all over Wenatchee, from some of the developments behind the cemetery to South Wenatchee. Yeah, kind of all—it's scattered all over, though, but I could provide that list, or like I say, there was a map presented back there.
Or email it to staff, and they can send it out and say, "Here's the preliminary list of roads that they're looking at."
Because we might want to trade projects, you know. We do have council districts now.
That's right. And the intent of this preservation program really is we are trying to stick with the program's suggestions for the year after year to kind of stick to that programmatic approach to bring in our condition, though.
That's why we have programs.
And we should be able to coordinate your projects with the GIS district maps and do something in GIS to show the projects, I would think.
Yes, we could certainly put together that—you know, I could get that tentative list. I had it as a Google Earth map, but I could certainly have that put into GIS, and, you know, as the project goes forward, that will be—I believe we are—that was one of the approaches from the consultant, was to use GIS to kind of identify. Another thing they're going to have to be doing is getting out there and identifying pavement repair areas, so all those spot repairs that we would need to do prior to overlaying, we could certainly coordinate with GIS, kind of how we have been doing with most of our capital projects.
Good. Super excited to get this done next year.
I'll make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Partite for design services for the 2020 pavement preservation project number 1913, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Sparza, to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Partite for design services for the 2020 pavement preservation project number 1913, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jake. Thank you. Our first budget amendment, Mr. Posenjak.
Good evening. Brad Posenjak, Finance Director.
We have an updated—
Yes, you should have an updated—
It's slightly different than the one in your packet, but yeah.
And then you—I think you should also have a list of the 2019 first-half budget amendments. So I have ordinance 2019-27, amending the 2019 budget. All of these items have been reviewed and approved by Finance Committee. There's a—on the Exhibit A, the—I guess the column to bring your attention to is on the appropriation side, where it says ordinance 2019-27. Those are the increases in expenditure appropriations that council would be adopting tonight. To highlight some of the major ones, if I look in the general fund, there was $210,000 for a few police vehicles that were approved in the 2018 budget but didn't actually get around to be purchased till the 2019, so that needed to be rolled forward. They were expected to be done in 2018, but timing. There was also council a couple of months ago, I believe, authorized an additional $760,000 of general funds for additional street overlay projects that are going to be happening this year. There's a property purchase out by the Public Services Center that's going to happen later this year. That's a total of $900,000 across several different funds, a half million coming out of the general fund. Then, some of these things are administrative items, such as with the sale—we're going to be selling the Maple Street Fire Station soon to the school district under contract, and when we sell—you'd think when we sell it, we get revenue for it, and we do, but half of that revenue, under another agreement, we have to give to the fire district, and for accounting purposes, when that happens, we have to book an expense, and so that wasn't included in the 2019 budget, but this will allow for that expense so that we can—
Nor was the revenue.
Nor was the revenue. So there's an—there—many of these have offsetting revenues. I just am listing out the projects and the expense.
Because for your budget, you'd need appropriation more than you'd need revenue.
Yes. By law, we don't have to adjust our revenue budget, but we do have to adjust our expenditure budget. A few other things. There's a large one under Fund 304 for paying off the line of credit. This is related to the property purchases and redevelopment in North Wenatchee Avenue. It looks like a large amount. The only reason that this is in here is because we had private financing for these—for a line of credit for these projects, and to save the city some interest costs, we decided to finance that with inter-fund loans internally and save us some money. But when we did that, per accounting standards, we have to show an expense to pay off the private financing, and even though—even though really nothing has substantially changed, we still have to put an expense, so we have to have a budget amount in here. I think as you just heard, the 2020 pavement preservation project discussed, there was a—to start—to begin that, there was a $400,000 request that needed to get going on that work. This list looks pretty lengthy. I would say that the reason it's so lengthy is because the city budgets its budget very tightly, and so when we built the 2019 budget, there really is no room—there's no—there's no extra room. So departments don't have—they don't have room to just make these additional purchases. So I would take pride in the fact that the city's budget is so tight that when any $10,000, $20,000 request comes in, that they—it has to go before the Finance Committee and has to be presented to council for approval. I don't believe that all government entities operate that way. Oftentimes, there's extra room built in the budgets, so yeah, I'd open it to any questions.
Brad, there's two items here in the kind of—in the top half of the list, and then kind of a break, and then the bottom half of the list. In the first half up there, there's a Kiwanis-Mettown Park additional contribution, $820,000, and down in the second half then, the 302 category is another $299,000 almost. Can you explain the difference between two? I thought we were in for 800-plus, but where's the other 300 gone?
So that's where this ends up being—having to—we have separate funds. We have the general fund, and it is contributing—the general fund is sending money out to this Fund 302 that's going to end up paying for Kiwanis-Mettown Park. So Fund 302 already had a certain level of budget authority in Fund 302. However, when the cost came in a little bit higher, we had to increase that by a little bit in Fund 302 to be able to accommodate those increased costs at the park. In the general fund, all that's doing in the general fund is moving a few budget items and repurposing them to be able to give general funds to the park. So they're not—they're related, but it's not a one—it's not a one-to-one relationship.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. All right. Any other questions for Brad? I know in the past, we've sort of done these annually, but the auditors like them done a little bit more often, especially on the appropriation side, so I think this keeps the auditors a little bit happier doing them sort of midstream. So without any questions, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2019-27, amending the 2019 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2018-41, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city, and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Kulaus, to adopt ordinance 2019-27, amending the 2019 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2018-41, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city, and requiring this ordinance be approved by a majority of the council plus one. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Just the 48th Amendment to the purchase and sell agreement for the parking lot?
Yeah, we're going to tee that one up for me. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Steve King, Economic Development Director. Sixth Amendment for the Mission Kitahas parking lot. It's got good reason behind it. We actually were really close to bringing a development agreement before the City Council. They had done their SEPA traffic impact studies, but they asked if we would consider delaying because they would like to expand the project's scope a little bit, redo the traffic study, redo the SEPA evaluation, and then come back in August with a development agreement based on a little bit bigger project. So that's the request for the extension, and so—
Yeah, as we sort of mentioned, they're looking at additional property to expand the scope of the building, not only to the north, but perhaps even to the east.
I seem to remember somebody suggested on number five that it could go a little bit longer.
That was you.
And this has all come about because some properties have come up for sale recently.
Yeah. Or they're looking at expanding. I don't know that they're actually for sale, but—
And Mark's point is, end of August enough.
I think you get Mr. Wyden, he's already signed this, so—
Yeah.
Let's check.
Yeah, I—we want to get this thing done, so I honestly use this as a little bit of pressure, too. It kind of works both ways, so.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the Sixth Amendment to the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Widener Apartment Homes for the Mission and Kitahas parking lot, extending the due diligence period to August 30, 2019.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulaus, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the mayor to sign the Sixth Amendment to the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Widener Apartment Homes for the Mission and Kitahas parking lot, extending the due diligence period until August 30, 2019. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Northwest Wholesale Lease Termination Agreement, Mr. King.
Yeah, so when we negotiated the purchase of Northwest Wholesale for our right-of-way and redevelopment area there, we—they wanted to stay in the facility until their new facility was built out in Baker Flats, so the termination agreement is just simply terminating their lease. They were out before the end of the lease. They're cleared out now, and so as of actually a few days ago, May 31st, they're off from the site's ready to be repurposed, so this gives us legal possession of the site. And then there's a settlement agreement as well, because when we negotiated the purchase of the property, part of the property was purchased as part of the transportation project, which is a federal aid—based on a federal aid grant, and when we buy property, we are required by the Uniform Act to pay relocation costs for—if we have businesses being relocated. So that process went through its hoops, and when they got down at the end of the process, the federal aid project would not pay for the relocation of the warehouse because it was outside the scope of the road project. So we negotiated, sat down with Northwest Wholesale, negotiated the remaining relocation costs, and Northwest Wholesale was very fair with us. We thought it was going to be in excess of $100,000. They used their own labor to relocate most of it, and those costs are associated with relocating all the product that they had there in the warehouses and on the yard, as well as like their fertilizer plant and their propane tanks, which had electrical connections. So in your council packet, you'll see that there was a list of what those costs were. So I think this is a very fair settlement agreement and appropriate. We're actually was advised by the Department of Transportation that we were required to do that, even though it's not part of the federal aid project, so that's the basis.
And the property is spotless. They mopped the floor and did everything before they shut off power, but I mean, it really does look—they did a nice job, way better than the washstop building.
That settlement was what, 30-something?
36,000, yeah, and change, yeah.
I want to make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a lease termination agreement and a settlement agreement with Northwest Wholesale.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a lease termination agreement and settlement agreement with Northwest Wholesale. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jake, you're back. Waterline extension.
Good evening, Council. Here to talk about now the Montana-Dakota Water Main Replacement Project, here to ask council to approve a project budget amendment and award the contract for construction to Pipkin Construction. So this project is replacing the old 50 to— So this project is replacing the old 50 to 60-year-old water mains in Wilson, Montana and Dakota Streets between Millard Dell and Miller Street, just north of the high school. These were, these segments were identified on our 2012 comprehensive water plan, so we're getting around to that. We, we started construction this past fall. This was all done in-house and put the, the project out to, to bid, and we received three bids on the project. Wanted to point out with the budget amendment, the, the water plan estimated the cost of the project in 2023 dollars, it's just a little over a million dollars, which would come out to a little less than 900,000. When the budget was put together, one of the segments that we are replacing was not included in that project budget cost. So we actually came in under cost for what the comp plan had put together. And we needed both segments to basically connect all, all the, the aging lines in this segment, so. So yeah, we were, we were happy to get, we've, we put the project out a little late in the season, but it seems that we found a good spot in the schedule for contractors, and we got some favorable bids from Pipkin. So we would recommend that council would authorize the mayor to sign a construction contract with them.
You anticipate this to be done this summer?
Construction should start in July and wrap up in September.
The, the impact on the street is just gonna be a less-than-full width resurfacing or?
Yes, this, this project, we will be putting the new line back in the trench that the old line sat in. So just trench repair, but yeah, a little less-than-half-street replacement. And then we, they're also, we were replacing all the services along these lines. So there are a number of driveways that are gonna be replaced because their water chamber is in the driveway. So we'll be rebuilding that driveway to meet the current ADA standards and restore their approaches as well.
We'll probably have to do temporary water hookups for a while for people?
We are, the city is gonna provide temporary water mains and services to all the residents while the contractor does that to try to eliminate any outages.
Good project.
Yeah.
I'd like to add something to that. We hope to come back later this year and talk to council more about the, the key interest we have with our re-preservation program and the impact of our utility projects on that program. And whether we, we want to start to say, as an example, a water main should either fully repay this street or contribute to the preservation program. Because we know that street patching is one of the number-one things that causes our pavement condition index to go down. We have Jake here, who's managing our preservation programs, and he wants the money, he needs money for that. He's also got a water main project that's causing it. He's got a, he doesn't want to raise water main project costs, but he doesn't wanna, wants more money for his preservation. He's got a foot on each side of the fence, so. We wanna come back and talk more about that. So you, we know we're, we're searching for money for that program. If we start to put more of the preservation dollars on the utility, then we can go back and say, well, we've got a line we're trying to make with, making with utility. We need to raise the rates slightly to account for the additional asphalt costs. It's a complex issue, but I thought it was a good time to sort of talk about that, to really spotlight that issue that we're facing.
And then let's make sure we plan the replacement prior to the preservation program.
Yeah, we'll also point out the...
There's nothing worse than nice new asphalt getting dug up.
With, with our pavement preservation program, we looked each of these years of the projects, and the first thing we did was remove the segments that were on the utility comp plans, knowing that those are gonna be torn up in future years.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the project budget and award the contract for the construction of Montana and Dakota Water Main Replacement, project number 1702 to Pipkin Construction in the amount of $683,429.48, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Asparza to approve the project budget and award a contract for the construction of the Montana-Dakota Water Main Replacement Project, 1702 to Pipkin Construction in the amount of $683,429.48, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Jacob, you're taking one for the team to talk about math here, huh?
All right. So I, Jacob Piler, Engineering Services Manager. In talking with the guys back there, we noticed kerfuffle was the word of the day earlier on. This is clearly a kerfuffle. To try to lighten the mood here a little bit, we've got a bit of a kerfuffle to, to, to square up here, so. I don't know how to spell kerfuffle. But anyway, so... It'll be in the minutes of the meeting. I, I'll be looking for those ones. Also, to give you a little bit of background, last year, our, our street preserve, or, street maintenance crew went out and did a, a whole bunch of skin patching work and overlaid, excuse me, skin patched over many of our utility castings. They ran out of time to get those castings back up to grade. And so we put out a contract this year that just wrapped up for accommodating or getting those back up and accessible. The count that was done prior to putting the contract out ended up being below what the number of utilities that needed to be adjusted was, which, like I said, is, is a bit of a kerfuffle on our part. But, but nonetheless, per the city's financial management policy, any budget adjustment beyond, I believe 10% is the number, needs to come back before council, and, and so that's why I'm here tonight. In terms of an increase, we're looking at a $43,000 increase, about half of which comes out of the water fund. The rest is distributed amongst the overlay, sewer, stormwater, and then also a contribution from the Shank County PUD, since some of their water valves are involved in this process. So we, at this point, recommend that the budget amendment is approved. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
So I guess, as I understand this, right, there's, there's a bunch of these access points that are, that are currently under, under asphalt. You're, they're not accessible?
Not anymore. They're accessible now, but, but yeah, from last fall to the last three weeks, they were not accessible.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw those guys out working on Western Avenue and stuff and running flag and digging up stuff, and they were, they worked really hard for a couple of weeks. They were everywhere, just flying, doing, they...
Yeah.
Lift them up a little bit, sand them up, pack them down, and they were doing a bunch.
Yeah, it's, it's tough work, because you, you, you're, you're waiting for concrete to set up before you can put asphalt back in place, and we were expecting that to take up to about a month and a half, and they knocked it out in three weeks. So we were really pleased with that, but less so on the, on the budget side.
You got, you got almost half the numbers, right?
We, we strive to be better than that, but...
It's all right.
Kerfuffles happen.
I think we said the finance committee, we, this wasn't a necessarily a change order per se where we... And it's just the quantity went up. So we would have paid regardless.
Yeah.
We were, we were overlaying and marking on the curb where the, where the utilities were. We had a count, and then once we got into it further, we realized there was more, more than we had taken over there.
I'd entertain a motion if we had one?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to approve the budget amendment for the iron adjustments, project number SW 18-11.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Markhart to approve the budget amendment for the iron adjustments, project number SW 18-11. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. So is it arc flash or arch flash? Now I'm confused.
Yeah, see, both of those. It should be arc, I think.
I think it's arc. It was arch earlier today, now it's arc.
Arc.
There's still an arch in this staff report.
I know.
That's the way it goes.
Okay. Hi, hi, John.
Hi. So we are here tonight, I'm the utilities manager for the city, to discuss arc flash analysis and labeling. This project is work to basically assess electrical equipment in our treatment plant, our lift stations, our police station, and our convention center. The key components of this is to promote safety for city staff. Real quick, arc flash is basically the potential for a electrical explosion if a person is working on live electrical equipment. That type of work can happen at certain facilities where we have essential functions that happen, and we might have to do a repair, well, we wanna keep that process going. So again, the key is consultant will come in, do an analysis and labeling. There'll be, that consultant will help the city staff place these warning labels that kind of tell of the exposure risk that that equipment has on it. They'll also educate us on the proper equipment to be wearing if you were gonna do that work on that. And then they'll also give a general background of what arc flash is. So the budget was not originally, this project wasn't really originally planned for, for this year. The budgets are broken into four tasks for the treatment facility, for the lift stations, the police station, and the convention center. We did for the wastewater treatment facility, get a AWC grant. So we do have a $10,000 grant that will help with a little bit of those costs. The total cost is $94,000. So what staff is recommending is the city approve the budget that was presented to the finance committee and further request the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant contract on behalf of the city with RH2 engineering for the City of Wenatchee arc flash analysis and labeling.
So two questions.
Yes, sir.
Why are we doing this now? What's, what's pushing us to move forward with this now?
Yeah, so it's probably something we should have had in place before now, but it's more to mitigate risk. We did have an employee request that we have an arc flash study on our equipment. And so if a accident was to happen that's electrical rating-related, LNI's first thing is they ask, do you have an arc flash study and analysis? So even if it wasn't related to that, or if the employee was completely at fault, that's like the first thing they ask for. So it's, right now, it's to help get this study in place to help everybody know how to work safely, but also to mitigate risk in case we do have an accident for claims.
So then my second question is, is are our panels not already UL listed, which typically includes arc flash study?
Yes, ours, not all of our panels are. So on new projects, we have been putting the arc flash analysis and labeling into the project scopes, but we have existing equipment that do not have this.
They draw on older equipment?
Yes.
That are not ULs. Okay, thank you. And tell me the amount again, because...
So the amounts are, and these aren't the exact dollars, but 30,000 for the treatment facility, about 30,000 for the lift stations, 20,000 for the police station, and about 16,500 for the convention center. So total's 94,000.
The packets are missing those two amounts, so our packet shows 56,000.
Okay.
Yeah, I must've got a outdated packet.
We were in the process of this presentation, we were waiting to hear if we were gonna include the police station and convention center. So when I sent the first one to hold the spot for this, we hadn't received those numbers back from the consultants.
So even our police station has non UL listed panels?
Yeah, the, and that, my not, my understanding of that is most of that is the HVAC equipment. So anything that's three-phase, 480 volt.
And my questions were, I, I get the wastewater treatment plant, you got big things doing big stuff, and I get the lift stations, and what's going on with the police station? I said HVAC, and then a convention center. I guess we have kitchen equipment in there, yes. And some...
Well, and some huge HVACs.
HVACs, yeah, yeah.
This isn't my area, but you have a panel that's UL that has not had the arc flash study yet. You were asking if they were UL listed, well, they're...
Well, usually when they're three-phase, high voltage, I thought ULs didn't require the arc flash. That was, that was a big component of it for high voltage panels.
Yeah.
Like, we know the new is, this is what you're saying, it's old, old equipment. Now, that's, I can see your surprise on the pair of new building, like, with weight distribution.
And new HVAC equipment at the convention center, yeah.
Yeah, and from my end, we started this on the, the treatment plant and the lift stations and kind of then said, hey, facilities, do you guys have any areas of deficiencies? And they did do a little bit of looking and determine there was some deficiencies.
Thank you.
No problem.
Right. Any other questions for John? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the budget presented to the finance committee and further request for the city council authorize, and further request the city council authorize the mayor to sign the consultant contract on behalf of the city with RH2 engineering for the City of Wenatchee arc flash analysis and labeling project SW 19-07.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart to approve the budget presented for the finance committee and further request the city council authorize the mayor to sign the consultant contract on behalf of the city with RH2 engineering for the City of Wenatchee arc flash analysis and labeling project SW 19-07.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, is, I think this might be an item I need to recuse my cellphone?
No, you're okay voting to approve repairs to the convention center, to the program.
Yeah, this is about safety.
Okay.
I can say you're not in favor of safety if you want me to. It's okay.
No, I am in favor of it.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Arc flashes are a nasty thing.
Yeah.
35,000?
Wow.
Possible, yeah?
I've been the victim of such. It's an amazing thing.
I don't wanna be a, I don't wanna be part of a...
I had hair singed on the back of my neck.
Wow.
The flash was in front of me, I lost hair on the back of my neck.
Wow. All right.
I haven't come back either.
So Mayor's Report, I do have a, just sort of a little bit on process. So I know our next regular scheduled meeting is two weeks from today. We have a number of folks that are gonna be at the AWC convention. So I think the consensus from staff was we wouldn't have a meeting on the 27th, but I do wanna make sure that... So Jim is gone.
Yeah, I'm at AWC.
Lyle's gone.
Linda's gone.
Linda's gone.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
So we got pinky promises for four?
The 27th?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Because we have some stuff we need to get done, and she said, do we do the 27th?
That's something to do, we're here.
Or do you wanna jam stuff in the 20th and not do the 27th? We can do either. We can do a special meeting next week. And do, we got three or four action items that sort of have, we're gonna get our bid back from the asphalt folks, and we've got a construction amendment, we got another thing from Steve, so we got three or four things. Totally up to you guys. We can do a special and not go on the 27th, or we can just stick with our regular session. Totally fine.
Neither day works for me.
Well, to stick with our regular, with our regular schedule then.
All right.
Lots of little things. I'm not even sure where to start. I think we'll start a little bit with Parkside. So we did have a call with the governor's office this week, and the consensus from the smarter-than-us is they're not gonna give us the $2 million that Douglas County has if that was an appropriation of the legislature and has to go back. So our requests are either through the ACH, which apparently has some funding, or Drew's thought was make a capital budget request, which made me wanna throw up, but... So anyhow, we're gonna work on getting the mold fixed, and then we're gonna sort of stop and wait to see whether the ACH has money for us or what sort of the next plan is. But the thought of us getting a couple million dollars to get that building finished and up, and is not coming. But we are gonna fix the mold. Hank Aaron said to the tune of about 100,000, then we're just gonna sort of stop. So there's gonna be a list of stuff that they're gonna want done that we're just not gonna do. And so we're sort of waiting to see where that, that sort of goes. We did get an interesting email last Friday from the U.S. Department of Transportation regarding our infra grant. So obviously, we have an application in, and they actually emailed us and had questions on our grant, which was good, because last time, they didn't have any questions. And we made it, we made it most of the way up. So we sort of felt good about that part. Some were technical sort of engineering questions, which our engineering team got together and provided responses to. The second was when we made the application, we sort of looked at last time and saw how the tea leaves sort of went. And the tea leaves last time were sort of red state. No, we're not red state. Red congressional district in a blue state, you know? Not that one either. one either. DOT's got, I think, 19 of the 20 projects, well, this is a city-county project. The other one was if you provided, the requirements were a 40% match, and we threw in, we had a 50% match. And so what we did is we had the connecting Washington dollars, and we had all of it up, and then we just put in a line that said the State Department of Transportation or the state legislature will give us $25 million more through the next transportation package. When we put that in, session was going, and Hobbs had his package sort of there. So we felt decent about having it in there. Of course, that's what they asked about, tell us more about the 25 million. And so Senator Hawkins was nice and sent us a letter saying that basically every five or six years, the state does a multi-billion dollar transportation package, and the last one was done in 15, he expects one in the next two years, and there's no reason to believe that the city wouldn't get $25 million. So we put that in there, and I put in a letter after talking with the ports and the link and other of our partners, the PUD and others, that basically said, in essence, if the state doesn't get it, we'll find it locally. So both of those sort of went. So we're sort of interested in how this is going to go, Steve and I, and Jeff Wilkins and Shiloh and Commissioner Steinberg are off to DC next week. We'll, we're flying on Tuesday, meeting with all of our congressional delegation on Wednesday, and we'll be home on the midnight flight Wednesday night. So this is our last chance to get a little push. We have heard through the grapevine that maybe end of July-ish would be a time when they might be announcing the winners. So we're sort of, a little faster than we thought, but we're sort of keeping our fingers crossed. We thought getting the email was a good sign. No reason to email us questions if we're going to not fund you. Sort of going through my, where I've been, I think that's really about it from my side. Allison?
School district.
Oh, we met with the school district, so on Tuesday night, so we were just trying to get some land across the school district property between Maple and Springwater. We had had some appraisals done, we sort of gave them an appraisal that said if we just acquire the road width, what that might be, if you wanted us to buy some land, so we get some houses on there to help pay for the road, and then the appraisal had appraised all of the hillside as well, which will clearly be open space, and we were negotiating. I told them that we weren't pay for open space, that if they wanted us to take it on, we would, but, so the consensus by the school board was they just wanted to sell us the right-of-way for a road. So that's roughly $100,000 or so, 110. The road will not be a full city-standard road, it will be something less than that, because we have no way of paying for it, nor would the developer want to put in sidewalks, curb, and gutter, when he's not really getting anything back for that. So that is where it sits today. I don't know if they're going to want us to get a different street put in there with respect to how a few housing, houses and/or what they want to do with the hillside, but at this point, it sounded like they want to keep the hillside. So it was sort of an interesting meeting, but I think we got what we needed, not necessarily what we wanted, but we got enough to, I think, continue the development agreement with the folks at Triad. Allison, keep me going.
I think you hit the major things. And then for next week, we have a work session, and one of the topics is the update on the cryptocurrency standards, and so Matt Parsons had sent out a memo to you, you had requested a tour, really, with the change in the crypto markets, the home-based, there weren't many of those to go evaluate, so I think he gave you one major list, which was the Alcito, and then he'll have an update on the code for you next Thursday, and then we have a couple more department work plans next week, so.
Here, can I make an introduction?
Yeah, yeah.
Matt Chell, will you raise your hand?
Oh, there's Matt, I didn't realize.
Matt Chell, our new development manager.
So Matt's been with us a couple of weeks, so he's helping Steve with all of the stuff that Steve's been working on, so.
Yeah, he went with me up to Trelane yesterday.
I heard, the EDD meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Next week, on Monday, we, Brian Chance is being promoted to captain, so we'll have Captain Chance's promotional ceremony at 4:00. Is there still a whitener opening on the 20th? I have that on my calendar.
That got pushed off to July.
Oh, okay, I knew that. I didn't know it, but I got rid of it. Okay, council members, anything on your sort of commissions and things you're sitting on?
WDA, the ale trail is this Saturday, they're running low on tickets, so if you're not doing anything Saturday?
Come drink beer?
Go buy tickets, because they're lower than anticipated on the sale.
Oh, the sales are.
And also Saturday, Oneanchy Pride holds their annual pride event at Lincoln Park from 11 to 4. Congresswoman Schirr is going to be speaking a little bit before 1:00 p.m.
Oh, good.
And the wellness committee got a donation. I went to the chamber banquet, I saw this table with a excavator on it, a little toy excavator, so I sat there with the excavator, I was Goodfellas, and they pick up rocks, and I picked up one, and it was number seven, and they gave me a cash card. And I thought, well, that's interesting, I mean, I took $10, $15, it was $100.
Ooh.
So, and to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I donated to the wellness committee.
Excellent. That's a good public servant right there.
I would have kept it.
Would have been in the slot machine, right, Mike?
PDC would be looking for you.
Yeah.
Rivercom is going through some interesting situations right now. We've had to let a few dispatchers go just because of issues, we'll leave it at that, but they are actually down about eight dispatchers right now, and they have five hired that are going through training, actually, six hired. One should come online July, August, the other five won't be online until January.
Okay.
So they're trying to figure out what they need to do to try and retain people, and then we're also struggling with the issue of, because we're down people, we're having to hold people over on a double shift.
Yeah, they don't like that.
That's crazy.
Overtime issues and-
Overtime issues, so we're trying to figure out what to do to retain people, and I think that the way it's looking is, is that they may end up having to bump some pay, they may have to pay some double time, it could end up affecting the year-end looks for next year for our regular pay.
Did, I know at one point, the folks from Link were in, did the council, I know that East Oneanchy basically did a resolution supporting the two tents for Link. Did we ever do anything here?
We, we have both resolution ready to go for Link, they're scheduled to come on July 11th.
Okay.
And then we have a resolution for Rivercom as well.
Okay, okay, but we got to consider that later on, okay.
And on July 11th as well, yeah.
Okay. Allison, anything else?
I think that's it.
Council members, anything else? So next week, work session. All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.